Good morning and welcome to the February 27th, 2024 Board Meeting.
Good morning and welcome to the February 27th, 2024 Board Meeting.
Good morning and welcome to the February 27th, 2024 Board Meeting. It is now in order. I'd like to welcome my fellow board members and the public. It is encouraging to see so many smiling faces that are actively participating in local governance at our school board meeting. I'll politely ask the public to help our board meetings go a little more smoothly by following a few simple housekeeping rules. The public's opportunity to address the board is during the public comment portion of the meeting. I'll ask the public to refrain from speaking loud disruptions, distractions, or other forms of communication that hinder the business of the board. All right, Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to offer the board a -- to hold a moment of silence and I welcome the audience to join in as well. All right, we are going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have two students from Tropical Elementary. You guys at the podium already. Wonderful. If you will, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We would appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for your help there. All right, we are honored. Today, we have a performance in store for everyone. So the Tropical Elementary Chorus is here. We're going to give you guys the floor, so whenever you're ready.
I don't even want to dance.
I'm not. Do you want to dance?
That was amazing. Thank you guys so much for performing. That was a wonderful performance for us. I believe is -- I think we have someone that's going to come up to the podium. I don't know. All right, Marlo, is that you? It's a little hard to see you.
Hi, Marlo.
All right, in case any of my fellow board members would like to ask any questions of this wonderful group, Ms. Jenkins, do you have any questions or comments?
Sure. I'm gonna -- you said Marlo?
Yes.
I can't see you.
I know. I can't see her either. Yeah, the TV screen.
Marlo, what is your favorite class during the day?
There you are.
Reading.
Ooh, good answer. But also music.
Awesome. And I want to do -- I just want to say shout out to this girl right here in this black headband. Yeah, yeah, confidently busting a move during that dance break. I saw a little Macarena. Well done. I'm proud of all of you guys for standing here and being so brave and confident and singing your little hearts out. Thank you so much for bringing some joy this morning to us today.
Yes, wonderful. Ms. Campbell.
All right, I need you guys to turn around because I want the audience to see what your shirts say on the back. Treble makers. I love that. You guys are amazing. Okay, now you can turn your smiling faces back to everybody. What fun, what fun. You guys did a fantastic job. So let me ask of everybody, how many sixth graders in the group? I was trying to think of sixth graders. All right, how many fifth graders? Fourth graders? Wow, all right. You guys have got a -- you're going to be a huge group next year with just a few sixth graders leaving. Sixth graders, I hope you keep up with it because -- and go into middle school band, chorus, orchestra, multiple groups because you guys have a great experience that you've built up, so good job. All right, question for Marlo. All right, Marlo, can you tell us what the words of the first song meant?
Kind of like "Hi, Hello."
I love it, thank you. I put you on the spot and you had to answer. Good job.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you. Mr. Susan.
Thank you. I first wanted to say thank you for taking your time as an instructor to work with these beautiful children and get them to where they can be. Thank you so much. To have a program this successful and be asked to come up in front of the school board is a big honor for both us and you for your dedication to the profession. I really appreciate you and what you do. And thank you, all of you who came here today and the parents. You guys are amazing for coming and supporting them. I know you guys have work and a million other things going on, but this is what helps us as a school district get back to our roots is having you guys come out here. The one question I had is, besides these two gentlemen down here, do you guys like tell the boys not to try out for your thing or what's going on? Do we -- should we get more gentlemen to be a part of the singing group or how do we do this, man? Either that -- no, what? Listen, guys, 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 I get you, just stay strong, all right? You're representing, you got to bring some more friends out next time we see you, okay? We got to do a better job of that. What's that? So third, I'm sorry, I didn't see all the way through there, I apologize. Four, all right, four. I didn't see all the way down there, thank you so much. Five, we're having more.
All right.
What in the world? Okay, five. I apologize, I couldn't even see them all. So we got five kids. Still, we need to have some more gentlemen that are a part of it so that you can have some of those deep tones and stuff like that, so thank you so much. And I just wanted to say thank you as the person that came out and spoke for them. It takes a lot of courage and dedication and I really appreciate you for doing so. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Mr. Trent.
All right, so again. Now I can see you guys. It is. So you guys were awesome, thanks. I mean, there's magic in numbers and it's -- you guys work well together. You can really tell you've -- you put your heart and soul on this from the instructor, but I want to thank the parents, the teachers, the staff for encouraging, you know, young people like yourselves to maybe step out of your comfort zone and, you know, try something new. This is -- this is great, I'd like to see this. So with all those fourth graders, I expect to be double this size next year. There's your challenge. So love your energy this early in the morning, it's great to see that. And now we get to say, back to the -- to school and have all this energy, go back to Tropical, so unfortunately. But we, parents again, thank you for allowing us to have this time to see your students in action, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trent.
Ms. Wright, if I may, real quick, you guys may ask one of the staff members in the back to give you an extended tour of the ESF facility that may prolong your going back to class.
Mr. Trent.
I don't know, Dr. Rendell's the person that makes that call.
Okay, let's go ahead and mute Mr. Susan's microphone.
The other thing I just wanted to say, the other thing I wanted to say is, the three of us are part of a tenor, so we would love to come speak and sing at your school, so anytime you want to invite us to come by, we would love to come by. And that includes the other board members too. So if you want us to sing, Dr. Rendell really breaks it down and so does Mr. Trent, so anytime you want us to come, let us know, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Susan. I skipped you, I'm sorry. Dr. Rendell, do you have anything that you would like to say before I wrap it up?
Just to go on record that we are not part of a quartet, we do not sing. If we came and sang, it would be a bad thing. No, I want to thank you guys, what a great way to start today, what a great way to start today. Thank you so much for coming and maybe the bus driver will drive slow on the way back.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Okay, so I have a question for you guys. How many of you were nervous this morning when you were coming here? Wow. You were like, ah, am I TV ready? I love it. Okay, and Marlo, I have a question for you, Ms. Marlo. All right, how did you get selected as the person who stands at the podium and answers the questions?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
In my world, we call that being voluntold and so that's what maybe happened here, but In my world, we call that being voluntold and so that's what maybe happened here, but In my world, we call that being voluntold and so that's what maybe happened here, but thank you guys so much for coming this morning and spreading cheer and the upbeat music. thank you guys so much for coming this morning and spreading cheer and the upbeat music. thank you guys so much for coming this morning and spreading cheer and the upbeat music. It sets the tone for the rest of the day for us, so we appreciate you. It sets the tone for the rest of the day for us, so we appreciate you. It sets the tone for the rest of the day for us, so we appreciate you. I hope that your joyful noise is sung throughout your houses on a regular basis so that everybody I hope that your joyful noise is sung throughout your houses on a regular basis so that everybody I hope that your joyful noise is sung throughout your houses on a regular basis so that everybody else can get to experience the magic that you guys brought here for us this morning. else can get to experience the magic that you guys brought here for us this morning. else can get to experience the magic that you guys brought here for us this morning. So thank you so much, we appreciate you. So thank you so much, we appreciate you. So thank you so much, we appreciate you. We're going to take a quick break real fast, I believe, to take a photo. We're going to take a quick break real fast, I believe, to take a photo. We're going to take a quick break real fast, I believe, to take a photo. Is that correct, Mr. Brune? Is that correct, Mr. Brune? Is that correct, Mr. Brune? Okay, all right, so we're going to take a quick break and we're going to take a picture Okay, all right, so we're going to take a quick break and we're going to take a picture Okay, all right, so we're going to take a quick break and we're going to take a picture with you guys if that's okay, all right? with you guys if that's okay, all right? with you guys if that's okay, all right? Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
See you later. Don't forget to invite us to come sing.
Alright, that's a fun way to start our morning. I love that, the energy, the upbeat. Alright, at this time, I'm gonna offer my fellow board members and Dr. Rendell an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Does anybody like to go first? Ms. Jenkins, push the mic, alright?
Yes. So this week, Palm Bay Magnet High School's Technology Student Association chapter competed in the Florida State Conference. Thirty-six students competed in forty events, placing fourth overall in the state, winning ten trophy spots for the top three. This team placed in almost every single one of the semifinalist categories. And if that wasn't enough, Adelies Rosa Padilla and Zoe Blackledge also received Technology Student Association scholarships as well. So congratulations to Palm Bay Magnet High School. And I was told they also have four students that attend Melbourne High School as well on that team. So congratulations to all of you and to Mrs. Allen for being an incredible teacher and leader and mentor for these students. I had an opportunity to go to Riviera Elementary with Ms. Campbell to see the Tax Watch presentation that we presented here in the boardroom to Mrs. Myers. And Riviera was recognized for their incredible academic growth in every single one of their subgroups. But having an award here in the board isn't the best part for her. So she has an opportunity to pick a student for a two-year college scholarship. And so we were able to be there when she surprised fifth-grade student Jefferson and his parents, who were sitting in the audience, they didn't know why they were there, with two years of college. It was absolutely incredible and heartwarming. Quite frankly, I was under the weather, but I still went because it's my favorite thing to see. Not only were the parents super moved and overwhelmed, but Jefferson himself, when he went up to the microphone to say a little speech, he couldn't hold back the tears and he was crying and thanking his parents and his teachers. It was absolutely incredible to see. And she couldn't have picked up better student to represent that school. So congratulations to Jefferson and all of the students at Riviera Elementary for making such incredible gains to even provide this opportunity for one of your peers. And last but not least, I just want to do an announcement that the Space Coast Association of Realtors on Saturday, March 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is gonna be hosting Project Prom. So this is an opportunity for all of our students to go to Space Coast Association of Realtors to have access to free, 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 gently-used attire and accessories for them to attend prom. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Campbell?
Alright. I wanted to thank the members of the board who were, I think we're almost there, all there, who came to the Children's Hunger Project fundraiser luncheon and to the members of our staff who came. We had a great turnout and really thankful for Ms. Anna Diaz, Principal of University Park, as well as one of her students, and the choirs from Sable and Crote, who came to entertain and to share. And those are schools that are impacted by the Children's Hunger Project, so thankful for them. And I'm thankful for our community's support of that organization, which directly impacts students all across our county from north to south. We're feeding 4,000 students on the weekends, in addition to the school district being able to feed them during the week. And so it's a great partnership and I'm thankful for all the people who participated. The last two Fridays, I was able to participate at two different schools for their African-American read-ins, where they brought just tons of guests from the community, leaders. At Columbia, they had people who came from out of town and out of state even to be a part of this read-in. And they, they had guests for every classroom who came and read books, either by African-American authors or about African-American history, all curated by our media specialists and just answer questions and talk about the careers that they have and talk about the story. I had some really fun books myself and had some great times. And so I really want to thank the assistant principals at both of those schools who coordinated those efforts, and that's Ms. Parks at Columbia Elementary and then Ms. Hamilton Brown at Sundry Elementary. What a great job. They're so connected with their communities, but it was really great to see so many people coming in and participating so that they could have a reader in every classroom. So great job to those, those two schools. We are entering in the music world, the secondary music world, the music performance assessment season. And just for the board and the community, these are free, they're, it's their, kinda like their Super Bowl game, right? Their state champion, state champion, their district championship game, where they go, the choirs, the bands, orchestras go and they compete. They're not really competing against one another, but they're sitting before judges. And if you just have a day where you want to sit and hear some great music, send me an email, I'll get you the schedule. It's free to the public to come in and hear. You do have a lot of wait time between us, they come and set up, but they, they get to perform before the judges and really are just at their best, every music program. So happy to send that information out. Like I said, it's free to get in at the different locations. So I can see that information, but really excited. And then if they do really well, they just appear to have the opportunity to go to the Super Bowl for music, and that is the state MPA. So I look forward to seeing a lot of those performances myself and congratulating those programs who are gonna do a super awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
Yeah, first I wanted to say on the tail end of Ms. Campbell, many people may just read and see some of the things that Ms. Campbell advocates for, but you've done an amazing job for advocating for the arts, the bands, the music programs, the orchestras. Through the years, you've not only honored them, but advocated for their needs and stuff like that. I just want to take a second and say thank you for that because we do have arguably the best programs. That does not come without your support, so I wanted to say thank you for that. The other thing that I wanted to do is, is say thank you to Harbor City Elementary School. I went by there and spent some time on Friday. They came up with some things, one of them I may bring up just a little bit, put on you guys' radar later on. But I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Boyd and the school for having me over there, met with a lot of their leadership and a lot of the good things that we know are happening inside of our schools and just fine-tuning in some others. I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Rendell. On March 15th, there's a workforce summit at NASA. All of the major organizations are gonna be a part of it, Blue Origins, everybody else, and their school districts that are coming in from across the state. Thomas Kennedy from Citrus is bringing a hundred kids. Melbourne's, or Miami Dade's coming, Broward's coming, there's a bunch of the school districts that are coming. And the overall idea for the workforce program is that we're trying to get students across the state of Florida in all their tech programs to come to Brevard to, for work, because we don't even have enough, we have too many jobs for the amount of kids that we even have in front of our schools right now. So it's become a regional competition, whereas if we don't fill those jobs, companies won't come here. And what ends up doing is they go to Texas and they go to Alabama and everything else. So big deal on March 15th. And I want to say thank you to the Astronaut Memorial Foundation for putting that together. I also wanted to say thank you to our discipline committee. I don't know if some of you guys have been briefed yet, but we have a, part of our resurgence as far as coming and redoing our discipline was to form a committee by our peers. So it includes both teachers, administrators, and other individuals from our, I have, we each have a representation on there, but they just made some major recommendations. And I had the opportunity to meet with Pam Dampier, who's heading that up, and give her a shout-out for working so hard to diligently keep on top of all of our discipline issues because I think that our programs that we're putting forward are in really good opportunities and policies. We, we still have some ironing out to do, but it's in a good direction. I want to say thank you to Samantha Nazario, who's here today, because not only do she, you know, is she for the bleeding disorders and some of the other awarenesses that she does, but she also works with our Hispanic groups as far as culturally. She was, she's been with the United Third Bridge for a long time, and she advocated for many of the things that we do inside of our cultural area as far as Hispanic Americans and just some of the things that we've done in the past. And I appreciate you for the time that you've put in for us. The other thing I wanted to do is say Satellite Beach, so here's what happened at Satellite Beach. I don't know if you guys knew this, but there was a auto-tech competition. And I'm sorry, Dr. Rendell, if I'm stealing your thunder here, but Satellite Beach had the Universal Technical Institute Top Tech Challenge. This is where all the state, the programs from across the state come in and they compete. This is turning motors and everything else that they used to do back in the day. And our schools took first. So listen to this. First place Satellite High School, Jason White and Koa Kelly, instructors Randy Pitts and Chris Wilson, took first in the state of Florida. But guess what? Who took second? Rockledge. Rockledge High School with Owen Erickson and Schaefer Cook and instructor Ed Sebecta. So we have the top two schools in the state of Florida for the automotive tech challenges. But don't get, you know, it goes on, it goes Oviedo, then it goes Heritage, Lyman, all the way down. But 10th place, the second satellite team came in with Bryce Giannantonio and Gage Underwood and Koa Kelly, also instructors Randy Pitts and Chris Wilson. So in the top 10 for the state of Florida for automotive tech competitions, we took three of them. Top one and two and then number 10.
Skip Heritage.
Oh, I missed Heritage, it's right there. Look at that. Look at that. Sorry. Heritage High School took fifth, Jonathan and Smith and Keegan Blount, instructor Michael Browden. Apologize about that. So we took four of the top 10, so thanks for adding that in. And then in the individual written competition, we took first place by Satellite High School's Jason White, second place Satellite High School by Koa Kelly, third place Rockledge High School Owen Erickson, and then there was a bunch of other non-Brevard awards after that. But one, two, and three took it. So if you're looking at, are we number one in the trades? Definitely. Because you look at O'Gally High School with the aircraft hangar, you look at the automotive programs winning here, there is no doubt that Brevard is top list on all CTE programs in the state. Wanted to also, that's it, that's all I got for the rest of my stuff. I had a couple more, but I'm looking over, you guys are giving me the eye, so I'm gonna stop at that point.
Alright, Mr. Trent.
Wow, can we just sit back for a moment and realize what we have going on here at BPS? It truly is amazing what's going on throughout our district. And, you know, I'd like to maybe take another avenue, is just the, the feel inside the schools right now on February 27th, or it was this past week, is it wasn't just one school, it's every school I stepped into, you could just tell, this is when teachers and staff, administrators know it's, it's go time again in the classrooms. You know, we're off of the Christmas break, we're off of the heels of our science fair project, so the hangover there is done and over with. And you can just feel it from classroom to classroom, from school to school, teachers and students alike, they're just getting down to work. They know that, many of these teachers know they have between now and, and spring break to get through a lot of crucial curriculum. And it is, it's refreshing on my end, walking through and seeing the, the young minds going and the teachers excited to be there. So pat yourselves on the back, you got a lot more work to do, but that's, that's, I just want to let you know out there, when we, when we're walking around and we see that activity, teachers, we have your backs, parents, you know, continue asking the students what's going on because there's, there's more projects and there's a lot of work to go on. So there's a lot to be proud of inside our schools right now. So I want to thank all of us up here, Dr. Rendell, for the vision, but ultimately, those of you out there that are seeing the, the project, you know, continue. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback on one of the ones that you, that you already mentioned. So one of the disadvantages of going last is a lot of times, like I've said before, we are at the same things. And so, okay, you've already thanked him, but I want to, I want to highlight the Children's Hunger Project because that event is such a special event. And when you hear from a child who relies on these meals to get through the weekend in order for them to be able to eat, that's a foreign concept to a lot of individuals, but it's not a foreign concept to a lot of children in our school system. So for the Children's Hunger Project to step in and really fill in the gap, but something really cool that happened from the Children's Hunger Project is that there was a table who was sitting with their school representative in the North End, one of the schools in the North End. And that representative from the school identified, hey, there, there's a huge need at our school for children to have shoes. We have kids coming to school that have no soles on the bottom of their shoes, sometimes they don't even have shoes. And you think, oh my gosh, how in the world is this happening? But, you know, special people in the community hear a call to action like that and they step in. And so I want to give a shout-out to Edna Wilson because the first thing she did is she went to social media, she rallied the troops, and she filled the back of her SUV with a ton of stuff to go and donate to that school, that specific site, to put shoes in those kids' feet. And, and that is just, I mean, that is what community is. And so Edna, if you follow our social media, you've probably seen some of these announcements and recognitions that we're doing, but just such a special individual. But it's one thing to hear it and it, and it stirs something in your heart, it's a whole nother thing to really go and do something about it. And so hats off to her, I appreciate her, thank you. I sponsored children for the Children's Hunger Project for the first time. Yep, I, I did. So I didn't do it last year, but I did it this year. I thought, no, I have seen this program work now for a full year and I know the importance and value of it. So if you have not sponsored a child, you should sponsor a child, it's not very expensive and it helps a kid get through and get meals that they definitely need. Also want to give a shout-out to the Regional Science and Art Fair, we've had awards going on. And so one of the fun things that we get to do is go and walk and they ask us to sometimes participate, be on the stage, help congratulate the children. But I gotta tell you, some of these science fair projects, number one, I'm thinking, I should have probably pushed my children a little harder because we didn't do science fair projects to these caliber. And when I see some of these projects, I am blown away that kids are able to do these type of projects. And the same is said for the art that they do. It is absolutely amazing. It's outstanding, it really is. And so I want to thank Space Coast because they were, Space Coast Junior/Senior hosted the North End Science Fair and Art Fair Award Ceremony. And that's a huge ceremony with a lot of schools, a lot of kids, a lot of people. And so I want to thank them for making their school accessible and giving us the time and space to be able to recognize those students that achieved so well. I also want to give a shout-out to the Gardendale team. So on President's Day, when a lot of the country was closed down, it was a, I guess this would have been a teacher workday for our teachers. So the GCR team reached out and said, hey, we're gonna do a beautification project and invited the board to come alongside to help them. And it was just a really cool experience to get to go into that school and help decorate and brighten a hall. So to the GCR team who put that together and the amount of hours that we spent squatting up and down, no shy of 300 times, I think it was, I thought, I thought this is a workout, by the time it was all done, but it was for a good cause. When we left that hallway, the before and the after was just drastically different. And, and that's the hallway that these kids walk into when they first come into the school. And so I think it's very important to create a welcoming, fun environment. Before, it didn't look very welcoming or fun, and now there's a lot of color and a lot of love that was put into that. And so I look forward to some, some future projects there. Thank you for that team at GCR for doing all the hard work and initiating that and inviting us to be a part of it. It was a very amazing experience, so I appreciate that. Dr. Rendell, I'm gonna, I'll stop so that we can give it to you at this point. Do you have any recognitions that we have not hit at this point?
So I'm gonna pitch it back to Mr. Susan. We have things going on every weekend, it seems, and we've talked about music concerts and science fairs and everything, but two weeks ago, there was Odyssey of the Mind, so I'm gonna let Mr. Susan talk about that real quick.
Yeah, it's, it's the reason that I'm wearing the T-shirt is, is that my son actually competed, so I was able to go to it as a teacher. I had, I sponsored community problem solving and some of the other things that went on like that, that are similar to this. And I just wanted to say to the staff and all the participants, and Vieira High School for hosting it, that was amazing to have the engagement that the students had with their peers and everything else and some of the things, it was just free, it was free thought is what it is. And it's amazing to give a little bit of structure, let the kids come in and just take off. And across the board, from the building of the bridges and the weights and everything else, all the way to the acting, to all the other components, what you saw was kids smiling everywhere. And that, it doesn't happen without the support of those instructors, with the support of the schools, with support of the school district and everything else. But to be a part of it as a parent and as a school board member was something special. So I was wearing my T-shirt, I just wanted to say thank you for having me, both as a school board member and as a parent, and I appreciate the opportunity and way to go, Odyssey of the Mind. Look forward to many years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Rendell, do you have any other recognitions?
Just one more. So yesterday was Kindness Day. It was appropriate that we had Tropical Elementary here chorus singing today because Kindness Day was actually born out of some work at Tropical Elementary by Barbara Wilcox. She's a teacher there, and I think she's actually across the street today getting the proclamation from the County Commission for Kindness Day. We're gonna do a proclamation for her, for Kindness Day at our next meeting. But this is something that she and her students started at Tropical several years ago, and it's now one of the things we do every February 26th is Kindness Day. And it's, it's a way that, you know, to, for us to stop and think and remember that we should be kind to each other every day and make sure that we're, you know, treating each other the right way. So hats off to Barbara and her team, and we'll have her here at a future board meeting for proclamation. That's it.
Thank you. Looking forward to having her here. That will bring us to the adoption of the agenda, so we're turning it back over to you, Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. On this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 39 consent items, three action items, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the following. Add addition of F-25 job descriptions, school secretary, administrative assistant one, administrative assistant deputy superintendent, administrative secretary confidential, and F-26, the class size compliance plan.
Do I, oh, sorry. Do I hear a motion?
Move to prayer.
Sorry, guys. It's an alert system.
It's a drill.
It's a drill. Yep. There's no way to turn it off. Unfortunately, even if you silence your phone, it's gonna still go. Alright, so we have a motion in a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
Who seconded?
Mr. Trent seconded, correct? Okay. No discussion? Alright, Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Wonderful. Alright, we have one resolution on this morning's board agenda, which is for the Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month Resolution. I'm gonna give Mr. Susan the floor. I think he's going to go ahead and read the resolution. Are you going to the podium?
Yeah, hang on. I gotta wear my red shirt.
Oh, okay. Wardrobe change, hang on.
I didn't wear my red shirt. So just so you guys know, I've been requested to wear a red shirt, but one of the issues that I had was the only red shirt that I had at the time was my Amityville swim team from Jaws. So just so you guys know. I'm taking it, it's okay, it's red. Get up here. I'm not doing this on my own. Come on up, you guys.
Mr. Susan, you have a special guest as well, so have them up, that's right.
Yeah, come on up, you guys. Listen, as I said before, this is an amazing family and we're honored as a school board to promote the Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. So let me read this. Whereas considered rare bleeding disorders that include hemophilia, von Willebrand disease, and rare bleeding disorders are characterized by the blood not clotting normally due to the lack of clotting proteins, also known as clotting factors. And whereas in the United States, more than 20,000 individuals live with hemophilia and rare bleeding disorders, with 6,000 of them living in the state of Florida. And 1% to 2% of the American population have von Willebrand disease, and while treatment can help, the conditions are not yet curable. And whereas symptoms of a bleeding disorder include unexplained and excessive bleeding, large or deep bruising, nose bleeds, and bleeding into joints, muscles, and soft tissues. And if someone has a bleeding disorder, they may have extended bleeding with incidences such as an injury or trauma, menstruation, surgery, or dental procedures. And whereas the Bleeding Disorder Foundation of Florida founded in 1996 supports the bleeding disorder community throughout the state and its mission to improve the quality of life for people with the condition and their families throughout education, information, and referral services, advocacy, support, and research. And annually, the organization hosts a 5K and fund walks and other events throughout Florida to bring awareness to the community and needed funding for the research and supplied services. Be it resolved that on February 27th, 2024, that the Brevard Public School Board, which is the only school board in the nation that does this.
Yes, for thirty in a row.
Does hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as the Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month, a time to encourage all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of these serious bleeding disorders and thank the efforts of healthcare professionals and the Bleeding Disorders Foundation of Florida and the National Bleeding Disorders Foundation organizers for their dedication and for their commitment to improve treatments and ultimately a cure. Ms. Nazario, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Susan. Good morning, everyone. My name is Samantha Nazario. I'm a proud BPS mom and bulldog. Go Mel, hi. I have next to me my amazing son Tyler. He is a 100% through-and-through product of BPS from VPK all the way to graduation. He is also on his second degree out of Eastern Florida State College, and he is the epitome of what we watched this morning. So that brought me so much joy because he will actually be performing in Dublin in St. Patrick's Cathedral with the Eastern Florida State College Community Choir in June. And that came from BPS's music program. So thank you, Katie, for all your support through the years, we appreciate that. We're here today to discuss Bleeding Awareness Month, and I do like to point out that, you know, Brevard does lead by example. We are the only school district in the nation that actually recognizes Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month for the third year in a row. So I take this beauty with me to DC and rub it in everyone's face. So today, the main mission is, I would like to bring a little bit of awareness to everyone here. I am sure that everyone in this room pays a copay when they go to a doctor, right? Everybody has an out-of-pocket cost for the year. cost for the year. Well, here in Florida, we're fighting for House Bill 363 and Senate Bill 228. It is the copay accumulator bill. What that means is, for example, one dose of Tyler's medication is $16,000. I would have to pay that $16,000 or my $5,000 out of pocket for the year. Our pharma company gives us something called Pharma Assistance, up to $25,000 a year. Well, my insurance company will take my $25,000 and tell me in April, you still owe the $5,000 out of pocket. That's what we consider in the bleeding disorder community as double dipping. And it doesn't just affect us. It affects anyone who's sick, diabetes, asthma, COVID, chronic illnesses like HIV and arthritis and other things of that nature. So please reach out to your local representatives. I am, we are fortunate enough to live in Brevard County where Senator Mayfield does support the bill. And so does Congressman Posey on the federal level. We will be there next week in Washington to get more signatures, to get that bill to pass. But we do, we act, what we ask is Google research. You may not know me. You may have never heard of a bleeding disorder. You'd be surprised how many people, as the Prox said, 1% to 2% of Americans are affected by von Willebrand's disease and go undiagnosed until a life-threatening situation. My son, thank God, is not hemophiliac. He suffers from von Willebrand's disease, which means prolonged bleeding. But the cost of his medication can be upwards of $250,000 to a million dollars a year, depending on the episodes we experience. Living in Brevard, we all know, rarely a family makes that kind of money here. So if we can get these bills passed on a national level and here on our state level, it would be a great progress for all of our rare diseases in the community. I also want to thank BPS for constantly leading by example. I'm so grateful to be a part of BPS and this community. Everyone up here has been extremely supportive of me through the years, and I appreciate that. I've donated over 40,000 hours of my time for BPS over the last 18 years. And it's been an amazing experience. Thank you so much for supporting the bleeding disorder community. And thank you, Megan, for looking fabulous in your red lipstick today. I just had to throw that out there. But thank you so much to everyone up there for all of your support year round and for all the hard work you do here at BPS. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you tremendously. All right. Do we have a motion? I know we need to make a motion and approve this motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Wonderful. Any discussion at all? Hearing none. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Proudly say aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, let's, let's take a quick photo. This is... All right. Wonderful. We are now at the administrative staff recommendations. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Are there any discussion? None? All right. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize some individuals who are in attendance with us this morning. It's all about the great Southwest this morning. So first, we'd like to recognize and congratulate Sophia Ponton. She's currently a teacher, teacher on assignment at Southwest Middle School, but she's being promoted to the position of Assistant Principal 10-month effective February 28th. So congratulations, Sophia.
Good morning, everyone. I first like to thank Dr. Rendell and the rest of the board for giving me this wonderful opportunity to serve our students in this new role. To Mrs. Jasmine Delauter, a true inspiration and a phenomenal leader, thank you for your confidence and giving me the nudge I needed and allowing me to become a part of the great Southwest family. I'm truly honored. I'd also like to thank Ms. Erica Jackson-Green, Melissa Rivera, Matt Shinosky, and the admin team for welcoming me with open arms and all of the guidance and support you all have given me. You guys are truly amazing. I'm thankful for all my previous administrators, directors, and colleagues that have mentored and supported me throughout my leadership journey. I'd also like to thank my husband, Kenneth, for his unwavering love and support. I wouldn't be here without you. To my four beautiful children, Nicholas, Ivy, Kayden, and...
Uh-oh, which one?
Okay, that's never happened. Nicholas, Ivy, Kayden.
Caroline.
Caroline, oh my God.
Let's hope she's not watching this.
I'm sorry. That has never happened before. Yes, thank you for being my reasons why. To my extended family in New Jersey and Alabama, thank you for the many blessings, prayers, love, and continued support. I'm extremely blessed and excited to continue serving the students in Brevard Public Schools. And I look forward to continuing my journey at the great Southwest. Let's go, Prox. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do that all the time.
So we'd also like to congratulate and recognize Melissa Rivera. She's currently an Assistant Principal 10-month at Southwest, and she's moving into the position of Assistant Principal 12-month, so more responsibilities. So congratulations, Melissa. The podium is yours.
Good morning. It is an honor and privilege to be selected for this position. I'd like to thank the school board and Dr. Rendell for the opportunity to continue to serve the students and teachers at Southwest Middle School. A special thank you to my family who's watching at home. My mom and dad who have proudly, proudly supported me every step of the way throughout all of my endeavors. My brother and his wife, shout out to him since I forgot him last time. My other half, Chris, and his son for encouraging me every step of the way and waiting for me on those long workdays. My principal, Mrs. Delauter, for mentoring me and guiding me in leadership and for choosing me to continue the journey of what we started two years ago. And finally, to the remainder of the admin team for being the glue that holds us together. I am so grateful for the opportunity to continue to be a Southwest Bronco. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we taking? No? Yes. I know. We...
That's all I got.
Okay, that's all you have at this point? All right. We typically pause and take a photo again. I know this was like a lot of photos that we're taking, but that's what we normally do. So we're taking a picture. So if you guys will come up front, we're gonna take another photo.
Yep.
All right. We are now at the public comments portion of the meeting. Paul, how many public comments do we have?
Nine.
All right. We have nine numbers of nine speakers today. Each will receive three minutes. In an effort to remain unbiased to the speakers at the podium, I'll be asking the parliamentarian, which is our attorney, to announce the speakers and manage the time clock. I'm gonna take this opportunity to remind the public of the rules written out in Board Policy 0169.1. All comments should be directed at the board or individual board members. Staff members or other individuals shall not be addressed by name. Abusive, obscene, or irrelevant comments will not be permitted. Orderly conduct is expected from all public comment participants. And the presiding officer may interrupt or terminate the participants' public comment opportunity. Mr. Gibbs, will you please call the first three speakers?
Bernard Bryan, Julia Anton, Karen Fulton.
Good morning. My name is Bernard Bryan, and I'm representing the South Department of the NWACP as well as the Concerned Citizens Organization, plus many schools that I'm SAC member of. So I'm standing for them right now. I just want to thank Dr. Rendell and this board for looking at improving the VPK program in the marginalized community. We are so grateful and so thankful for this school board taking the time to really look at those areas. We also would like to thank the board for at least looking at some strategic planning around capital expenditures in some of the old schools that really, really need to be upgraded. Thank you for putting that on your schedule as well as on your radar. So we just, we are so elated about that. So thank you so very much. Also want to bring up a concern that the community is really a little bit nervous about. We understand that math levels and educational gaps in reading and math is one of our biggest concern. And we are aware that PM 2 was just completed. And we did see some gains in some schools, but not, but not a lot in some other schools. So we hope that you will continue to put that as part of your priorities and really continue to focus on that. One of the things that we are really concerned about, though, is the staffing instability. What we have seen in our teachers and our instructional staff, we've seen around 42 teachers that have lost, that we have lost in this county. And one of the concern that we are worried about is when we look at the reasons, a lot of the reasons just say personal reasons, other employment. So to really, to help stop this bleeding, we really need to understand what are some of those personal reasons. And I know some of those may not be shared with the public. But in, but in order to drive to the root cause of why teachers are leaving this county, it also impact our student learning. Instability in our teaching staff, instability in our instructional staff is a problem. So if you can really take a look at why teachers are leaving, what are the root causes, so we can really attack those root causes. And then my final statement today is I'm concerned about chronic absenteeism. In some of our schools, we have seen around 15% of the student population where students are not present. And some of the things that we've seen is that some of the reasons are some of the students are homeless, some of the students are sick. So if we could look at more virtual solution, that would be helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. All right. We have...
Julia Anton, Karen Fulton, and Allison Curvin.
Pay attention to him. Years roll by and issues change. West on fire and driving public outcry. One day is old news, the next. But underneath all these temporary rallying cries, there's some fundamental issues that remain. War unwoke and the content of books, those are hot topics today, but they're just flag issues resurrecting a dead argument that some folks just won't let stay buried. They're part and parcel of the very same issue that had George Wallace standing in the door at the University of Alabama in 1964 to prevent black students from registering and attending that segregated institution. The issue is state laws versus the Constitution of the United States of America. In one of America's most dramatic events of the 20th century, with his fist raised in defiance of federal authority, Wallace made his fiery speech about so-called states' rights to have any law they desired regardless of the Supreme Court or the Constitution. And then, adding to the drama, the National Guard moved him out of the way, and they enforced the Constitution of the United States of America. State law and violation of the Constitution isn't worth the paper that it's printed on, as this event showed us. Now, let's fast forward to now. The state of Florida passes thought control legislation, and it's not worth the paper it's written on. Because it's a violation of the Constitution for the government to tell people what they may or may not talk about and what they may or may not read, or what they may or may not think. In any contest between the Constitution versus the state law, the Constitution wins always, every single time. So why am I talking to you about this now? Because the Supreme Court, whose job it is to interpret the Constitution, has given us the Miller test to determine whether words or images may be regulated. As a government entity, it is your job, your job, your job, to apply the Miller test regardless of any noise from those who want you to ignore the Constitution and regulate works that they personally find offensive. The Constitution wins. And for those who are offended by freedom of speech, that's the price of freedom.
Thank you, Ms. Anton. Who's your next?
Karen Fulton, Allison Curvin, and Kelly Curvin.
Oh, goodness. Good morning, board. I'm here as a Moms for Liberty member. And I want to give a public service announcement. We are not in favor of banning books. When people use the word "book ban," it evokes an emotion. It brings up an ugly history of a time when books were banned. That's why it's important to clarify the facts. This board has control of Brevard Public Schools, not the outside community or the world we live in. Your responsibility is to be a steward over the money spent and the students' education living in this county. I know I'm preaching to the choir by saying that. You all know that. But I do think it is something important to be, to be said for our community. There are laws put in place to guide you in your work. And we appreciate the work that has been done to try to curate our reading material for students. I'm not sure of the process of how the books are submitted to the committee. I know that there's a continuum of books. Some are more concerning than others. I wish we could work to get the more offensive books limited to our students ahead of the books that are maybe a borderline book. I don't know how to do that. But I think there's other people that could figure that out. I do wish that we could not spend so much time talking about that, but talk about literacy. Literacy is something that is important to me and obviously to a lot of members of our community. I appreciate the talk that this board has given and the work that's been done for early intervention. I'm a big proponent of that because that's where literacy starts. And I appreciate the work to build the readers of our students. It's our responsibility to our students. Reading is powerful. It's very powerful. Think of all the, the words that we've been speaking about this. Words truly have the power to change our perspective and transport us to another place and time. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker?
Allison Curvin, Kelly Curvin, and Maribel Campos.
At the last board meeting, I skipped my time to talk because I didn't feel good. After watching the rest of the board meeting online, I realized that was a mistake. Ms. Campbell said no one came out to talk specifically about Corder Thorn and Roses, and that was what my speech was about. Mr. Susan said Akatar had no educational value. I disagree. In sixth grade, we learned how to pick out themes in a book. Akatar may be a fantasy book with fairies, but the themes are educational. In fact, they share some of the same themes as the Bible. Akatar, wait. Akatar teaches about the power of family, the weight of duty, the differences between good and evil, and the power of love and mercy. Yes, it has scenes with sex in it, but that does, so do many of the books that you voted to keep. After attending many review meetings, I have found, I found another theme. Rape is okay, but consent is not. That's a questionable lesson to be teaching students at BPS, isn't it? The Nowhere Girls by Amy Reid is the book you're going to vote on today. It is about rape culture in high school. I'm not saying you should vote to ban it. You shouldn't have voted to ban a Corder Thorn and Roses either. I'm just calling out the hypocrisy. Jean Trent, you have a lot to say about the students you speak on February 6th. By what stood out to me was your claim that we are misformed. As a student, I should not have to explain to you your own book banning policy, but here goes. Books are banned in two ways in BPS. Informally, at the student level, at the school level, and if the challenger isn't happy with the result through the formal challenge, that is, that is board, that this board votes on. Many of the books that have been banned or... Many of the books that have been banned or weeded are banned before they even came, before they even got to this room. So, when we talk about books of history being banned, we're referring to books like a one about Helen Keller on Mesopotamia, or the sixteenth-century painter. There are countless more examples, there are countless more examples. BPS has a district website that explains all of this. Maybe you should ask the staff for the link. Thank you.
Kelly Curvin, Maribel Campos, Rebecca McAllenan.
Once again, I'm going to open with the word optics. It was no secret that a student-led rally was being organized for the last school board meeting. The biggest issue these students brought forth was educational censorship. Yet you've eliminated them from the conversation by holding this meeting during school hours. If you genuinely cared about student voices, you wouldn't be voting on any book during a meeting held while students are in class. But let's delve deeper into the timing of these meetings. It hasn't escaped my notice that a slew of policy changes, many of which will be contentious, are conveniently slated for morning meetings. In doing so, you've not only censored students, but also teachers, staff, parents, and community members. This raises serious questions about transparency and inclusivity in our decision-making processes. Megan, you'd held up this election process for the village oversight committee. You expressed a concern that a potential committee member would influence other people against the school board. So with that in mind, why is this board allowing a non-BPS parent to remain on your book reconsideration committee when she is actively working to undermine the committee and public trust in BPS? She has now voted twice to retain a book, then uses her political organization's platform to rally against the book. Just to be clear, she's Jean Trent's committee member, Matt Susan used to be her teacher, and she's friends with Megan Wright. It's as if the actions you criticize others for are the very actions that those that are closest to you engage in. Speaking of public trust, Jean Trent, you claim that you want open dialogue, but you've never replied to any email I've sent. Megan Wright, you replied to my last email by calling me names. Matt Susan, you recently used a prominent and well-respected black leader of our community as a human shield at the February 6 meeting, where ironically, I called this board out on its racism. The board's problem isn't that no one will talk to you, it's that you've spent the last year showing this community exactly who you are, and the community doesn't trust you. When the community has rallied to hold you accountable for the bad decisions and policies, your lies, immature reactions, and harmful rhetoric has been immortalized forever. As we learn from Jeremiah thirteen twenty-three, "A leopard can only change its spots if they make the effort to unlearn evil and choose goodness." Matt, Jean, and Megan, you've spent the last year showing the community that you do not have the humility to admit when you are wrong, you do not have the maturity to treat all people with dignity and respect, you have allowed wasteful spending in the pursuit of culture wars, you lack the courage to stand up to our governor when harmful legislation is passed, and you have allowed your own prejudice, ignorance, bias, and authoritarianism to get in the way of what's best for Brevard Public Schools. And just to be clear, and I've said this before, the community supports our schools, our teachers, and our staff. It is you in this board that we do not trust or like.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker?
Maribel Campos, Rebecca McAllenan, and Carrie Taycox.
The pen is mightier than the sword. These are famous words which simply mean that words carry a heavy weight and that words have consequences. A book is indeed dangerous, and words in the books can lead to mental health issues and to suicide. What the book review committee is lacking is common sense. Unfortunately, common sense can't be taught. Pornographic books, whether they are soft porn or hard porn, are not educational, and they are not saving lives either. In fact, they do more harm to a student's emotional well-being. The following book, The Nowhere Girls by Amy Reid, is neither educational nor appropriate for any minor, including high school. While I read the evidence from this fictional book, I want you to imagine yourselves being thirteen, fourteen years old, the youngest ages in our high schools. And I'm pleading to the board to make the right decision and remove this book from all schools in Brevard and to protect the minds of our students and children. Also, I wanted to ask, I just noticed online on the work session agenda that this book is listed on the formal objection and was stopped for language. Shouldn't this book be removed for language or just sexual content? No, it's not going to be removed for sexual language? Okay. So, parents, if there are minor children listening or watching now, now is the time to leave, as this book contains explicit sexual content and not suitable for minors. Yeah, that's what I thought. And if you're busy, and, excuse me, and if you're being currently sexually abused, look for one-on-one professional help, or these books aren't going to help you. A different girl closes her eyes and lets go, feels the boy's head between her legs, painting pleasure on her body with her tongue, just like she taught him. The annoying fact that Jesus loved and accepted everyone without judgment, she alluded to him being, his being a brown-skinned socialist. Fuck Levictus. So, we can't teach religion in our schools, but it is perfectly okay to teach anti-Christian values. So I ask, where are my religious freedoms? You ready, Ennis? Are you going to be a pussy? Fuck, Ennis, it's my turn.
I'm going to ask you to please stop reading due to the content of that book. The language, you can't, you can't stand up there and curse from the dais.
All right, that's what these books contain.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Rebecca McAllenan, Carrie Taycox, and Gina Durang.
I would like to address a couple of comments made at the end of the last board meeting by my representative for District Two. My representative said "facts matter" and "his job's not political." Well, that's good to know. But I'd also like to point out some observations after I've attended all but one of the board review committee, the book review committee meetings. The last meeting for The Nowhere Girls was emotional for all members except the one representing me. Why? Because all signs point to the fact that she's not reading these books. Or sold, or The Kite Runner. Clearly, she is a political appointee. My representative says it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. Well, Mr. Trent, the right thing would be to appoint someone who's at least trying to be unbiased. When the men on the committee are moved to suggest that Nowhere Girls be put on a required reading list, or at least an approved list, for high school students, and her comments were totally irrelevant, it doesn't take an educational major such as myself to see that she did not read the book. Shame on her and shame on you for your performative emotion about student success and calling out bias. Yes, there are millions of books released annually, but we both know that's a false equivalency. There aren't, can you share any books that have actually harmed a child? I am hopeful, as always, that those who've read these challenged books will vote with integrity to keep it. As to today's ironic statements, as well as last time, made, we do have more important things to talk about, absolutely. And as soon as we can take away our personal religious obligation, our religious choices, trying to put them into schools and get back to reading, you know, the more you read, the better you read. That's literacy. If you are reading a difficult book and it pushes you to a place that you don't understand, that makes you grow. We're not teaching social studies, we're not teaching culture, we're not teaching diversity, we're not teaching social, emotional learning. These books can provide that. They're not required reading. They are not being forced on students, they are not being told to read these books. You can rest assured that we can multitask. We will continue to question your authority, as your authority is the one that takes away the books for everyone. Please understand, the people that stand up here to talk about books constantly are not talking about a book, we're talking about all the books. All the books that deserve to be on the students' ability to get. There is no way to describe pornography, because there is no definition of that. And if you are reading a book like The Nowhere Girls and finding some sexual pleasure from it, then perhaps you're the one that needs to seek mental health. This book is important. Every member of that committee was emotionally involved. Mrs. Wright was there, she saw it for herself. I hope that you guys will take the recommendation of your committee that you selected and not waste their time and energy for what they've done to read it and review it and vote to keep The Nowhere Girls.
Thank you. Who's our next speaker?
Carrie Taycox, and then Gina Durang.
Carrie Tagas, thank you. Clock.
When you start, I'll start.
Oh, okay. Not too long ago, there was a hazing incident that made headlines in the school district. The hazing incident was of a sexual nature. There is a current school board candidate who is campaigning for a seat up on that dais due to this incident. Their child was one of the victims of the hazing, and it was reportedly so heinous that it moved this parent to run for office. And yet, here we are discussing an abhorrent book filled with sexual violence, rape, and other atrocities, on whether or not our students should have access to it. It promotes the use of sexual activities as a weapon of power over others. This book directly contradicts the kindness proclamation that was mentioned earlier. The mixed messaging this district sends to students by keeping this book promotes that repulsive behavior. Please think hard before making your recommendation. I want to personally thank my school board member, Jean Trent, for the fantastic work he's doing in District Two. He has kept his campaign promises, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Gina Durang.
Daring.
Daring.
Good morning, Board.
I'm Gina Daring. I'm with the League of Women Voters, and I'm here to talk about the science fair that was held at Space Coast Middle and High School. We were judges for this. We present a trophy, or a little award, for the Indian River Lagoon viability and health. We looked at six projects from the students, and I got to tell you, you know, my kids were in science fair, and I looked at these projects, and my, I mean, I was blown away that kids from fourth to sixth grade would be thinking on this level. It was great, it was amazing. The kids came in, they came up on the stage, waiting to come down and talk to the judges, and the knees were going up and down, and the hands, and they were bopping up and down. It was like the first day of school with the kids being nervous. So the projects that we looked at, three projects were about the mangroves and their viability. One was about algae growth, and the other one was about oysters and the positive impact on cleaning the lagoon. We had an amazing lunch that was provided by someone, donated by someone. It was a great, great lunch. The staff was amazing, they were passionate, the teachers were there, talking to the students and talking to us to see if we have any questions. The next awards, or next project, or next science fair will be at Central Middle School on March the fourteenth. It is my understanding it is a larger group of projects, and we need judges. We need judges. It's so awesome to be at this event and see the excitement of the students with science. It was just so great to go through and weave through the projects, and the kids were nervous because they thought that we were going to go up and talk to them, and then the teachers and all of us were like, "Oh, honey, we're just looking at the lagoon project," and just smiling and telling them what a great job. Please, if you have the time, it is March the fourteenth, at Central Middle School, they provide an excellent lunch for you, and you do make a positive impact on these kids. Again, thank you for providing the lunch, whoever provided the lunch, it was great. And thank you for the staff up there, because they were excellent.
Thank you. All right, we are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. There are thirty-nine agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any of the items? No? All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda for today's, sorry?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you weren't managed to. I apologize.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Paul Rolcall, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we are on to the action items. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The first, thank you, ma'am chair, the first action item is H-51 procurement solicitations.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Paul Rolcall, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The next action item is H-52 book review and challenges, the book titled Nowhere Girls.
Do I hear a motion?
Ma'am chair, I move that we remove this book from our libraries and shelves.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yes, I'll go first, since I made the motion. I wanted to make sure to get this on the record, because I think that, you know, I anticipate that my decision to decision of this board will be misinterpreted, misconstrued, but at least I'm going to have it on the record. I actually am very disappointed in some of our groups for putting selective parts out on social media as if that was the gist of the book. That tells me they didn't read the whole thing. Those parts actually are not the parts that bother me, because the book is about trying to defeat rape culture. That I can get behind. The book is about trying to get people to stand up for what's right, and I absolutely can get behind that. And so those parts, to me, are not the objectionable parts. There are still some, what I would call, graphic or explicit, they're very short, they're very brief, but parts, one of them was read that bothered me. This one, I, by the way, I know, Ms. Wright, you've committed to reading all of them, I have not, but this particular ones that are, I think are going to be on the line, I, you know, decided I'm going to read them myself, and I finished those on the other day at four-thirty in the morning. So, I, there's just still some things that were, to me, on the border, or actually just crossing over the edge of what state statute requires. You know, I don't, we have this conversation so much in the public about the Miller test and what is our job. I'll tell you what our job is. Our job is not to determine what books anybody in this district can read. Our job is to determine what books we will provide to them with taxpayer dollars. And I take that responsibility very seriously, I've said that many times. But, the other picture of this is, you know, we ask our committee, and I very much appreciate the committee, and I don't take lightly my decision to go against their recommendation, because I think they've done a really good job and they've been very thoughtful. But in this book in particular, when we're asked to take things as a whole, to me, that makes this book even more problematic, because as a whole, it's a book about teenage sex, teenagers having sex. And even if the book, the main message is against rape culture and against those things, what we're left with on the other side is not a positive message. And I will tell you, this comes straight from, let me read you a couple of things, Board. One is, out of our own policy on comprehensive health education, we have, which is policy twenty-four seventeen, number one, letter D, says, "For students in grades six through twelve, an awareness of the benefits of sexual abstinence as the expected standard and the consequences of teenage pregnancy." There's not a standard of abstinence. There are some people who kind of say "abstinence" in there, but it's not in there. So as a whole, this is not the general problem, because we're not going to go clear the shelves of every single book in every library that has a sexual moment. Because some of them are not very described, and they wouldn't break the law. We're not doing this. But this book, taken as a whole, you can't get beyond it. And one of the, this is from one of the reviews that our media specialists can use to choose whether they're going to pick this book. Here's a review, here's the last sentence of it, says, "A thoughtful literary portrayal of female sexuality in a culture that often rejects it." So, it's out, that's it. That's the summary from what we're looking at. So I can't, when I, this one, you know, like I said, it's on the line, but some of them, you know, there was a scene in Kite Runner, it was not explicit, and that was not the point of the book. There was a scene in some of the other books, and they weren't explicit, and it also wasn't the point of the book. There are some very brief scenes that I actually think cross the line, but also, as a theme of the book, I just can't go there with that one. So that's why I made the motion for us to remove this one.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Does anybody, any further discussion? Ms. Jenkins, do you have anything to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Respectfully, I heard a lot of me's and I's in something that we've appointed people to a committee to, and we're essentially wasting their time, which I've said it over and over again. and over again. If the board is going to read these books and make their own determination and disregard the recommendation of the committee, why do we have the committee in the first place? First, we went from all of these voting members with people who have expertise in these areas, downgraded it to appointed members of the board, and now we're not even taking their consideration seriously. So, if that's what we're going to do ultimately, and the power lies with the board, then disband the committee and stop wasting people's time. Stop wasting our staff's time, who have to oversee the committee and be here. It doesn't make sense. It's not adding anything because if you're going to read it yourself and take your own interpretation, then that's the choice that you made. So, the committee makes no sense. The other thing that frustrates me is you can have your own personal beliefs about something, but you cannot inflict that upon 70,000 students across private public Pornography is the intent to arouse. If you are aroused by rape scenes, that is a different problem. It is not the book. Books are not harming children. We waste so much time on this nonsense. So, again, I'm with wasting less time. Let's not have a committee if we're not going to take their recommendations seriously. There's no point. We're wasting staff's time. We're wasting our community's time. If this is what we're going to do going forward, then own it and do it. There's no point of this anymore. Never mind the fact that what has been made in public comments is very clear as well. We have people on this committee who don't even have students in our school system. The governor just had a press conference the other day stating that exact same fact. If you are not a parent in the school system, you shouldn't be challenging books. But yet, here we are doing that. It makes no sense. Just own it. If that's what you feel, and you feel like it's the right thing to do, great. I respect that you have the guts to say that. I don't agree with it, but I respect that you have the guts to say that. But then let's own that. We're wasting people's time because our staff can be doing way more important things than sitting here watching a group of adults discuss a book that their recommendations aren't going to be taken seriously anyway.
Thank you. Mr. Susan.
I'm good.
You're good. Mr. Trent.
All right. Committees. Committees give recommendations, just like the discipline committee. Doesn't mean we have to abide by them. They don't make policy. We do. We're not going to disband all our committees in the district. I think that would be not very productive. So, we knew the committee was going to give a recommendation. They're not making policy. We respect their work on that committee in reading of the books, and if there's something that comes out and we disagree with it, then that's why we're here. We're the ones that are going to be responsible for ultimately that decision out of the committee. Do we keep it? Do we not? They've done their job, and I respect each and every one of them. So, I mean, we have an audit committee, discipline committee. I'm sure we have a few more that they recommend, and then we take their recommendation. I find it hard to sit up here and to say, "I am just going to parent my child, and my morals and my values are not going to be put out in what I vote on here." That's why I was elected, and that's what I'll continue to do. It isn't a free-for-all. Ultimately, I have to go to bed at night. I have to put my head on that pillow, knowing I've done the best for each and every student that's out there. And if they want to go and get books outside of our taxpayers' dollars, then so be it. Do it. But just not when I have a say-so. I think I have the responsibility to say something as a parent. I have a 12-year-old daughter, and when I read this stuff and I want them to read it, no. We can get that message across in a lot less graphic way than seen here. I have a 17-year-old boy. I don't want to put these ideas in his head. I have given this material to numerous parents with young children. I have not had one say, "Well, let me read the entire book and get the context of it." Honestly, I have. I did. I don't read all these books. I read this book, and thank you for being honest. And, you know, we can go against what the committee recommends. That's not only our option, that's our duty. I said up here a few, maybe a month ago, "You guys are going to love the committee when it's in your favor," but there's an opportunity, or there's a chance, it may not go in what your favor is. And this is possibly another case. Language matters. You can't unread something. I mean, the language itself is enough, not even the storyline. You wonder why we have discipline issues in the classroom when you can use the F-word 50 times in a magazine or in a book, and you wonder why you get that response back from a student when you say, "Put your earbut down," or when you call home, or when they say, "Well, that's just the culture." Well, where are they getting this? Our taxpayers are paying for this and putting the manuals, the how-to manuals, in our libraries. And when this is all over with, and our time is up here, are we going to be saying... Are we going to be able to say, "We did what we could do to put the best material in front of our children"? You don't just wrap it up... I don't even want to go there. It's not the best way to get the message across. I'm all for against all the rape culture, but I don't believe this is a self-help book that needs to be tucked away in our libraries. This book's not even being checked out anyway. If you look at the data, it's just not. But it just doesn't need to be there because this is a precedent that we're going to set, and I will not be here and set this precedent if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Okay. So, I've been very open and honest about the fact that I'm reading these books alongside the committee because I believe that there are times when the entirety of the book does matter. I am... This one is a little different for me because, let me tell you, I typically, I have read at least a good portion of it before the committee meets. This one, I didn't get the book in my hands until the day the committee met. So, I saw the committee deliberate, and then I thought, "Okay, 5-0. Wow, all right." And then I went home and I read the book. And I love the idea of what this book is trying to say. I really do. I wholeheartedly think it's a great idea. What I don't agree with is the fact that there are multiple foul languages, Mr. Trent brought up, the fact that they talk about kids that are getting together, and, I mean, underage drinking. There's all kinds of things that are going on in this book that are not acceptable. And while it might be the community standard or the standard for a teenager, it's not one that I support. It's not one that I would ever encourage, and it's not one that I could sit here and say, "Yes, I would love to give this book to anybody." I wouldn't give this book to anybody, honestly, based on what is written inside of it. And so, I'm glad, Ms. Campbell, that you brought forward this motion. I know it's controversial. At the end of the day, the committee makes a recommendation. It's exactly why we changed the policy because the very first book, if you'll remember, that they reviewed, the committee made the decision. And then I thought, "Well, wait a minute. What happens if the committee makes a decision that we don't agree with?" Because as board members, we are supposed to be doing our research and reading and understanding and asking questions. And I'm willing to bet, not very many of us, it sounds like you read the book. It sounds like Mr. Trent says he read the book. Not everyone's reading the books, and so it's important. It really is. And so, I don't wholeheartedly disagree with your statement, Ms. Jenkins, on why I have the committee, but I think the committee offers a little more welcoming of a deliberation process to happen and for people to be able to spectate that and see that. Because when we're up here, we don't exactly always get to deliberate on why we feel the way that we feel. This book, I wish, I really, really wish that this book would have come through as something that I could wholeheartedly say, "I believe this should go in the hands of a teenager," because the message of what they're trying to get across is a very important message. And so, now I will dedicate time to researching another book that we can put in place of this book because the message still needs to get across, but this is not the best means to deliver the message. So, I appreciate you making the motion. I really do. I appreciate everyone's thought on this. You would like one more turn. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Just very briefly, because this was brought up. Pornography is not the only standard that state statute requires us to take a look at. I would not, actually not say that this book is pornographic as the definition of state statute. However, one of the other things we're supposed to be looking at is sexual content, conduct. And there is actually a qualifier on the... Ones that we would, that we would make a decision to remove because of sexual conduct. It actually talks about what would be underneath that appropriate for a certain grade, for whatever age level, we'd remove it. It's not an automatic out, like pornography is an automatic out. So, I think this is one of those that falls under that category. So, I just want to be really clear. Pornography is not the only thing that we can use, the only standard that we can use to make that decision. And I think if we make the decision to remove this, we will be in line with state statute and our policy.
I have a follow-up as well. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Jenkins.
First, I don't believe Mr. Trent said that he read the book and nor did his committee member. There were multiple board members who made a comment, and I think this is important not only to say to the public, but clearly the news was in here this morning for this, so I'm sure they're paying attention. There was multiple statements about how sometimes the entirety of the book does matter. No, actually, it matters every single time. That's the law. That's how the law is written. The entirety of the book matters every single time. And to say foul language and underage drinking and all these things that you don't feel comfortable with, that's not the law. That's not what the law says. So, to take those into consideration for the decision, you're not basing it off of the law that you claim is driving this policy in the first place. So, you guys need to take a step back and make a decision why. If you feel like it's the sexual conversation in there, then fine. That's part of the law. That's what you're deciding it on. But to add all of these other personal feelings, that doesn't fall in line with our own policy that we drafted and why we have the committee in the first place. No one's talking about disbanding all of our committees. My point is, there is no point of wasting staff's time if this is what's going to happen every time there is a non-solid 5-0 vote or 4-1 vote. It's a waste of time. It doesn't make sense.
Any other follow-up? No? None? Hearing none. All right, we have a motion in a second. Paul Rolcall, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
So, to clarify, the motion is to remove it. So, a yea means to remove it. Okay.
Ms. Jenkins.
Nay.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Trent.
Yes.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I know I said yes, too. I... All right. Just to be clear, because on the agenda, we have... Mr. Gibbs, I want to just clarify because the agenda has the book review challenge. She made a different motion. Do we need to go back and clean up this motion?
No. The recommended motion was to approve the committees, but the motion that was moved and seconded on the floor was to remove from libraries.
Okay. I was just making sure we didn't need to clear this one. Okay. All right. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last action item is H-53 Orchid Lake Educational Facilities Impact Fees Differral.
Do we hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I am going to move that we do not offer this impact fee deferral to the Orchid Lake development.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll go first. I'm just going to be very brief on this one. I... It just hasn't sat well with me, and after conversations with Dr. Rendell, actually had a conversation with another organization that's doing something similar that we compared this to. I, you know, when we talk about the... We did this for St. Stephen's Way, and I just clarified with them this week because I want to make sure I'm trying to picture the differences because it was presented to us as this is the same thing, but I believe it's not the same thing. Just for your awareness, when we did that for St. Stephen's Way, they are restricting the housing they're doing for... It's 100% for homeless families. It's... They're restricting theirs to the two... And I didn't write... I didn't bring the paper I wrote it down on, but specifically for the HUD definition of extremely low and very low income levels. And so, to qualify for those, there's not... It's not just the regular... And I am all for trying to find options for affordable housing, but these impact fees are also fees that we use to build schools for the people who are moving in. And so, and we need those. We want to build excellent facilities in every area. And so, I just don't feel comfortable with doing that. I know it wasn't... They made clear to us it wasn't their original intent to get it, but when they found out, "We did it for this organization, then maybe they'll do it for us." So, I... That's why I said, that's why I'm making the motion because I do believe these are two different type of projects, and I don't feel the same is necessary for this project like we did for St. Stephen's Way.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All right. So, Paul, can you read the amended motion? Sorry.
Move to reject the impact fee deferral.
Okay. All right. So, Paul Rolcall, please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Nay.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
All right. We are moving on to the information agenda, which includes one item for board review. It may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action should be taken on this item today. Does any board member wish to discuss these items? No. All right. And we are now at board member reports. Do any board members have any further things to report or discuss?
I just have one.
Ms. Jenkins will go down the line.
That's fine.
Yeah. I just want to publicly address and ask that the board get updated on the pending public records lawsuit at some point, like we traditionally do for most of our lawsuits. Not right here in this moment, but I want to say it out loud. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Campbell.
I was going to give... My mind just went blank. I was going to give a legislative update, but I will save that for next time around because we're... There hasn't been a whole ton of movement. But I will actually... If you're not getting the FSBA legislative updates every week, are you getting them? Because if not, I can forward them to you because I have.
And Russ also sent out a...
Yes, thank you.
He started sending that out.
Thank you, Mr. Rendell, sending them out, too. So, we do expect that they're going to be all wrapped up by the end of next week with the budget. So...
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Yeah, there's two things I wanted to say. The first one is that we had a spousal insurability form that many of our individuals pay... What they do is they fill it out, and if you fill it out and properly, you say that your spouse does or does not have insurance, and if they do have insurance at another location that they work at, then we are charged... We charge them $250 toward a healthcare plan, and if they don't have it, then they don't have to pay that. We had 37 individuals. I'm not sure if you guys were CC'd on the email that came out from staff, but we had 37 individuals who had not paid that fee of... Or had not filled out that form and had been impacted with that fee. The fee totals out at $3,900 during the year. So, what I did was I asked staff. I said, "Hey, I truly believe that we should no longer be impacting our people on this because they may have made a mistake." We had one individual that had reached out that kind of signaled it to me, and she had said that she had filled out the form previous years, and then all of a sudden, she got to a situation where she didn't fill it out this year because she thought that it would just roll, and now she was being impacted. So, it not being anything in claims or anything like that, and we have the ability to stop that from happening so that we can not have our people who decide to fill out the form not impacted $3,900. Staff came back and said that they're going to resend out to the 37 individuals that had not filled it out, the form, and if they properly fill it out, then they will no longer deduct it from their paychecks, and then they can move forward. So, I just wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Can I clarify that really quick? Is this the smoking?
No.
This is... Because I... When you go into the insurance, I just want to clarify. You talk about it being a form, but when you go in, you have to go in every year. We tell our employees every year, it's, "Don't assume that you're going to get whatever last year." They have to go in. It's actually a pop-up that you can't get past. I know because I have to do this myself, that says with your spouse, you know, "Do they have coverage with another employer?" And it asks, you have to do that. There's not an extra form. It's my understanding, unless, you know, because I did it even just this last open enrollment period. So, you actually can't get past that. So, I'd rather have that clarified because it's, you know, the purpose of that is that if someone has the opportunity to get insurance with their own employer, we shouldn't be footing the bill. You know, if they want to have our insurance because they think it's better or whatever, but they have opportunity to get insurance through their employer, then it's not the same. We offer lower for someone who doesn't have... Because we want to do that. If your spouse can't get insurance because they're, say, a stay-at-home mom, or they work for themselves or whatever, we want to offer that, and I'm all for that. But if they have the opportunity through their employer to get those benefits, then that's why that extra charge is there because our primary focus in this is to make sure we're taking care of our employees.
Yeah. I think where you're... So, there were 37 people out of 900 that filled out the form or did not. Like, they chose one way or the other. There were 3,700 people that did not fill out the form. There was 37 of them, right? Nine, 37 individuals. 900 did or didn't. So, however that form looks on your site, it, you know what I mean, it's... They did not fill it out. And what the problem that we had was, is that you're 100% right. That is a truly good program to be able to charge if people have insurance in other places because they're impacting our healthcare. That's not the intent of this. The intent was, we have teachers, and as this started happening, it started snowballing to where we have a principal that has the same thing, just people that just did not fill out the form that are now going to be charged up to $3,900, and they asked, "May..." we be able to fill out the form again? So that's all. So it's not that you're sitting, so what the staff is doing is just allowing them to fill it out properly. If they come back and they say, yes, my spouse does not have insurance the correct way, then they will be taken off the deduction. But if they do come back and they say, my spouse does have insurance, they get charged, or if they sit there and don't fill out the form after the second one, well, they're just going to get charged. But it gives them the opportunity to not impact our teachers in a way that, you know what I mean, may hurt them financially over just not being able to fill out the form, and there was only 37 of them. And I didn't know that you guys weren't CC'd on that email, so I'll just forward it. But staff's already said that they're okay, they'll send it out, and then identify the people who may not have had the opportunity to fill it out before, and then we correct the situation, okay? All right. I had one other thing.
Go ahead.
So I went to, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. I went to Harbor City, and when I was speaking to many of the leaders there, both the SAC and some of the other people, something that keeps coming up routinely over and over again is this MTSS process of, you know what I mean, evaluations and stuff like that. It happened when I was at Quest, it happened in a lot of different places. I just wanted to say, I wanted to give a lot of credit to Ms. Pam Dampier, because yesterday when we had a conversation during my one-on-one, we had sat down with Dr. Rendell, she had said that her staff is evaluating that process to try to look at best practices and look at how we may be able to reduce that amount of time or effectively, you know what I mean, have that piece. So I just wanted to give you a quick update and a big shout-out to Ms. Pam Dampier for her work on that discipline and stuff like that. And all the people that don't know what the MTSS is, it's the evaluation of students who have extreme issues as far as inside of our schools. All right?
All right, thank you, Mr. Trent.
That's it.
Any discussion or updates?
All good.
Okay, I have one quick thing I just want to bring up, because it was, a couple of things were said, and I just want to clarify. Mr. Bryan, I believe you brought up the, asking the question of why someone leaves the district, and I wanted to just, I asked the same question, because recently I saw job fatigue was listed as one of the options. It was not previously. So the categories that an employee can select is compensation, personal relocation, new job opportunity, job fatigue, career development and advancement. There's not a whole lot that we can do to necessarily make them pick one, but those are the categories that are there so that we can track the data a little closer. The second clarifying thing that I just want to bring up is that the board meeting's being moved. This conversation happened in December. The board?
October. I went back.
Was it October? Okay, all right. I thought it was December, but anyways, okay. So we had the conversation about, because we are statutorily required to have one school board meeting a month, but our district has two, a lot of months, we have a lot more than two. In order to be fair to everyone, we made an effort to have one in the morning and one in the afternoon. This was not created because of the social media thing that people are putting out there. This was done before that ever even existed, the social media campaign that's going on out there. And again, not everyone works nine to five, so this gives people the ability to come to our school board meetings that maybe work nighttime jobs as well. So that was why that took place. The other thing, the special meetings. Historically speaking, special meetings are always held at 9:30 in the morning. So the policy reviews that we have done, and you can go on the school board's website at brevardschools.org, you can look up the school board meetings that we have had for years past, and you will see every time there is a special meeting, such as policy review meeting that we're having, those are always held at 9:30, long before this board was ever up here. So just to set some records clear, that is not a stunt to silence anyone's voice, it is the way it has always been done. These are conversations that have been had out in the open. This is not some political stunt, as some people are liking to spin it. I would like to just clarify and correct that for the public so that they're aware. All right, and, Dr. Rendell, do you have anything further to report to us?
I do not at this time.
Okay, all right. We are going to take a short recess to move into the superintendent's conference room for the consideration of a student expulsion. We'll return to the boardroom to adjourn the meeting at the end of the confidential meeting, so I'm just going to go ahead and let you know we're going to recess at this time.